All right, you guys, we're live. Hello, welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. Today, we are joined by founders Greg and Amanda Killwine. Say hello, guys.
Hello.
Everybody.
We also have Colin and Jess from the team here today. Jess, hi.
Hey, everybody.
Colin's got a really weird background happening here, but I think it's kind of classy, really. I don't know. I like it. I like the blur. And then finally, we have a very special guest with us today. For those of you who were able to join us live in our Facebook group, if you don't know, we have Facebook group. Now you do. Get over there. Get Oiling is at, what is it? Facebook.com/groups/getoilingonline. Come join us. We were live earlier in the week with Dr. Jody Dinerman, and some of y'all got your minds blown by some of her insights into how you can engage your people, make them love opening emails from you, and so much more. Jody is a chiropractor and a Young Living brand partner, and runs both of her businesses using her Get Oiling account. And today, we're going to learn some secrets from Dr. Jody, and you're going to learn how you can get access to something that she's going to give you that's going to make your life so much easier. And guys, if you are here right now, and you are a coach, or you provide some kind of complimentary or parallel service type business, massage, yoga, consulting, if you're a chiropractor, if you have something that runs adjacent to your Young Living business, you're really going to want to listen closely today. And even, guys, even if you're not any of those things, just listen. Jody is so good at what she does. She's magic with words. I'm so excited for you guys to learn from her today. So without further ado, you guys give a shout out in the chat here. It's Dr. Jody, and I'm going to switch over to our speaker view. So we can see Jody.
Hi. I'm like crying with that intro. My face is soaking wet. That was beautiful.
You deserve it.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It's very kind.
Yeah, so for those of us, among us who were maybe not around earlier in the week to kind of get the, you know, get the lowdown on your background and how you're using Get Oiling, can you tell us a little bit about who you are, what you do, and maybe what you're doing with your Get Oiling website specifically?
Sure, because I gotta tell you, Get Oiling is kind of rocking my world. It's like I geek out on a different facet of it every week. So I've been in practice for, April 1st will be 21 years. Yes, I opened on April Fool's Day. And I'm primarily a pediatric and prenatal chiropractor, so Colin's baby is like making my hands want to reach through the computer. And I've been an oiler for that entire time. I, my oils are my medicine cabinet, my family's medicine cabinet. We do a lot with Young Living. And, you know, over the years, I've just been trying to streamline as much as I can the systems and procedures of being in practice, like the cerebral stuff, things that we have to think about from a day-to-day place, and so that I can do what I love. I was put on this planet to be a mom and to adjust babies and pregnant women, not to make phone calls and enter claims and do bills, and that's not my thing. So as quick as I can to do all of that busy stuff so that I can do what I really want to do, and that's, we've created an entire school based on that. So good stuff all around.
That is so cool. And we were so honored to be able to contribute to that and to help, help people actually put these things that you know how to do to use inside of our systems, both on the Get Oiling side, for oilers exclusively. And then, of course, we have a sister platform that a lot of you guys might already know about. We do some of our training over there. It's basically all of the amazing things that are Get Oiling, minus all of the amazing oily bits for folks who maybe just haven't found their way yet, right? So, so Jody, tell us, I know what we really wanted to kind of focus on talking about here today is, you know, is for folks who are getting started in, in sort of serving their, their audience, whether you're getting started as a coach, and maybe even specifically if you're getting started in business for yourself, in a service-based business or coaching.
Yeah, so Ashley, the best way for me to teach is to share stories. So, real quick, I remember really clearly, I was like 28, I had just finished my 10th year of college. I was over $100,000 in debt. I was driving back home to New Jersey in the worst health of my life because I had chain smoked my way through chiropractic school. I was at the top of my weight range. I didn't have, I think I had like $20 to pay for the gas drive from the way to South Carolina to New Jersey. And I was, you know, what graduate school did for me is it tore up every piece of confidence and what I knew about the world possible so that I could put it back together again, right? And then it took like two months to get my license to practice. And then I was like, oh, what am I supposed to do now? And we had some kind, we had some business training in graduate school, but from people who haven't been in practice in a long time, and it didn't feel relevant to the mess. I had such a strong message. And listen, if you're new in practice, you've got something to share with the world. That's why you went and got your coaching certificate. That's why you studied your essential oils. That's why you went to a graduate program. That's why you got a life grad. All right, Brandy. That's why you got your nutrition degree. Whatever it is that you do, whatever your message is, we weren't, we weren't as, as well-prepared as we could have been. I wasn't as well-prepared because I had to walk through the walk. I had to walk through all the different pieces and figure out how I wanted to do it in my way. So I think of you when I put together programs, especially like, we have a program, New and Practice Ready Psycho, right? When I put something like that together, I'm thinking, what, what was I thinking on that drive home? I was thinking, where do I even start? I was thinking, it's not appropriate to stand on rooftops and scream my message to the world. I should probably be appropriate. So how do I get my message to as many people as possible? I was thinking, what words do I use? What colors do I use? There was no internet back then. I know, I'm like, there was no cellphone. You couldn't like blast something out on Facebook. It didn't exist. So I was thinking, what colors do I put on a flyer? What, what fonts do I use for the flyer? What wording do I need to do to grab the people who I want to serve? Who do I even want to serve? You know, do I want to work with pregnant women all day, or do I want to work with two-year-olds? Much different vibe. Or do I want to work with people in pain? Again, much different vibe. So all of these things had to come together and come to fruition so that I could see it, you know? And so what we're talking about is creating that vision for you so that you can see it, so that you can go do it, so that you can make the world better. Make sense?
I love it. I love it. You guys, let Jody know in the comments. If you're here, I know we've got some folks who are Jersey proud.
Wow, what's up, y'all?
Neighbors. So, okay, so you guys, really hope you're paying attention here. So there's a couple of things, Jody, we had on sort of a list. I know we can, like, when we talk, we can just go places. So I want to make sure that we're kind of following our plan here. So one of the things that I wanted to make sure our, our community is able to hear from you is, is really, you know, from someone who is currently running two businesses using your Get Oiling account, how are you using Get Oiling on a primary basis for your, for your practice, let's say? And what would you say your favorite features are, like, to use?
Favorite feature, can I start with that? My favorite feature is you guys, like, you make Get Oiling/Attract Well. Um, I just feel like you have, we have something in common, and I think that's why it was a click. It's, if we're not at the very top of the game, push us a little bit further so that we can get there even more. And every time I see something that I want to go right where I'm supposed to go left, I text Greg or I email you guys, and there's a solution for it. And if there's not a solution, you are on it because it's important to you. It's like wherever you double-click throughout the experience of Get Oiling, there's an answer. And if there's not an answer, you are on creating one. That's the biggest thing I love about Get Oiling. Besides that, it makes my life a lot easier, and here's how. So I run a really busy practice, and I don't have staff. I like it that way. Because I'm a one-woman show. I've got a big mouth, right? I've got a big voice, a big mouth, and a big message. And people get in my way if there's somebody else in the room, you know, guiding the energy of me and my clients. So I need to make sure that all of the words and all of the forms and all of the messages and all of the teachings are as automated as possible. That's what Get Oiling for my practice helps me to do. How do I do it? Like legit, how do I do it? My intake, and remember, I'm a doctor in New Jersey, right? So my intake consists of a telehealth call. That's part one. First, I have their health history form, and they've made an appointment, and we have a telehealth call. The second part is that I send them a "it was great to speak with you" email, right? The third part is that they come to my office, and I listen with my hands and my heart. I'm not listening so much with my ears on that visit because we already did that in the telehealth call. And then I'm sending them the words to get them to know what I found and how I want to nurture them and nourish them and take care of them. And then they become my practice member. And when they become my practice member, there's all this continuing education that needs to happen. Most of that happens through Get Oiling. So the first part, if you're in practice, a saved reply is the, if you know Get Oiling, there's a way to make a save reply. And all I do is click in two places, and the whole body of that first "I can't wait to speak with you" email, it's all ready to go. All of the hyperlinks are created. My branding is in it. Out it goes. People have a warm connection. There's also a video in it of, hey, it's Dr. Jody. I can't wait to meet you, yada, 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 right? So the second part is after I meet with them, it was so great to meet with you. Again, a save reply. Here's what we're going to do from here. Here's the hyperlinks that you need to get to, how we're going to do all that, right? Then the third part is they're already my practice member or my client, if you're a coach, and I want to continue to educate them because it's so, so important to me. So I drip them information in what we call a campaign. And listen, if, if Ashley has taught me nothing else, this woman is so brilliant. And I literally said to her, I think that was yesterday, when I get off the phone with you, Coach Ashley, I need like four days to unpack 20 minutes of conversation. So one of the biggest things that I've learned from Ashley is that I need to keep my message short and sweet. I don't want to overwhelm people with words that aren't necessary. So my campaigns, what's a campaign? A campaign is continued education in a planned way, right? So it's one email on this day, one email on this day, one email on this day. It's different than a newsletter, right? A newsletter keeps them posted with what's happening currently. A campaign is evergreen. It has a lifespan. I have a campaign for my, for my oilers, for my pregnant mamas who are using oils. I have a campaign for my new patients that have kids. I have a campaign for my new patients who are pregnant. I have a campaign for people who I don't see anymore, who I miss, and I want them to continue to know, trust, and love me. So all of these things, I used to use this program and this program and this program, and now it's all melted together to create my Get Oiling experience, my Get Oiling platform.
That's amazing.
Your question, I kind of went all the way around.
Yeah, no, I, I think it did. So, oh, we got questions in here. Good question here. How long did it take you to get it all set up and running? And then I kind of have a question as well, Jody, for you specifically. Did you, and this is sort of to maybe help facilitate people seeing how they can take what you've just shared and put it to use in their Young Living business, or, you know, if they're a coach or whatever. Did you already have things that you sort of checked off? Did you have a checklist to start with before you started building these saved replies? Or like, how did, how did you come to actually start using these features and putting the automations in place?
Did somebody say checklist? So this is my checklist. And literally, guys, I need pen to paper. I'm old school that way. This is everything I need to do from start to finish. And the one, two, three, fourth thing here is add to Get Oiling. Okay, so I use a paper checklist. Some people who I know will use something like Trello. Some people will use the checklist features that they have in Get Oiling. It doesn't work for my brain. I need the paper. I need to see everything's crossed off, and then I can put the file away. I still have paper files. And the second piece of that is how long did it take me? 21 years. And the truth of the matter is, you know, I've adjusted over 100,000 people. At this, as I change, this changes. This is not a one-and-done kind of thing. If you are new in practice, keep it really, really simple. What is the message that you want to get to your community without overwhelming them? What do you do? Answer who, what, where, when, and why. That's all you need to do, guys. I'm going to say it again. Who, what, where, when, and why. Who are you? What do you do? Where do you do it? Why do you do it? And when do you do it? Who, what, where, when, why? That's all you need to answer in your initial correspondence. Any more than that is overkill. And do not overthink this, that you want to keep your writing level to like a third-grade comprehension. You don't want to use big industry terms. Keep it really, really simple. Less is more. Less is more, and less is more. And what I do, like technically speaking, I'll be, I'll be sitting at soccer practice with my kid because that's the kind of mom that I am. I'll be sitting on the sideline. And yesterday, I went honest, okay, like totally honestly here, I was at an OB-GYN appointment, and I'm sitting there in the waiting room for like 30 minutes. And I was like, I'm going to use this time. So I take the tape note feature on my phone, and I just start talking my next blog into my phone. I have a VA that I pay $16 an hour to. I upload that file. She types it out to me, or she types it out. We stick it in the blog, or we stick it in the save reply, or we stick it in the campaign. You have to find the system that works for you. That's the system that works for me and my brain. I go a million miles an hour, right? Me and my deep relief and my rose oil and my peace and calming and my valor. We go a million miles an hour, and that's why I use those tools, right? Because it keeps me on the planet. So I need to record the thoughts as they're coming in, send them to somebody who can digest them, and put them in, on a screen somewhere so that I don't have to do that stuff. When I was new in practice, I couldn't afford to pay the food bill and the electric bill, so I didn't have a VA. So again, I kept it really simple. I had a really cute newsletter. I put stamps on it, and I put it in the mail every week. So keep it very simple. That would be my number one thing.
I love it. I love it. So there's a lot of people here who would maybe want to move to that pretty part of New Jersey where you live so you could be their chiropractor.
It's worth the trip.
I mean, it's like doubly good. I've been there. It's a beautiful, it's a beautiful area, and I would love, yeah, I personally love that myself. So, all right, so, so how long in terms of, so getting it all set up and running, it sounds like basically what you're saying is, is that you have, you have been in practice, and you've been recognizing things that could be lifted up out of, I say this all the time, and put into a thing that you can now give away, right? And, and we did have a question about what a saved reply is. That is also my favorite feature in the platform because it can be used for so many things, right?
A lot of time. It's kind of like a canned response in Gmail on steroids.
Yeah, and you can, like, and you can use multiples in an email. You can use them to make blog posts. Like, there's so much you can do with that.
Sometimes I sit at my computer, and I'm like, what would Ashley do? You can take a saved reply, which is basically, it's a pre-typed-up reply to something or in conversation initiator, right? It's a pre-typed-up email. It's a body of words that get your message out. The coolest thing about it, in my opinion, is that you can put a video in it. There's a bit of a trick that Colin taught me, like, you do need to do like a, a capture of an image, but no, where else can you do that? Where else can you email 1,000 people, an email of a video of you talking? And it's really brilliant. And again, it's one-and-done. Like, you do it once. It takes 10 minutes to write it up to do the, well, it takes me 10 minutes, but, and then it's done. You're done with it.
That's amazing. I love it. And yeah, it's a really great trick that Colin taught you. Huge asset on the team there.
Yeah, he is.
So, all right, so let's talk about, let's talk about Soup School. All right, so you have created the sort of masterclass for women in practice who want to run their own show, like you do, right? To work like you do, because you don't have, you don't hire anybody, right? Like, you have a VA that you do some things with, but that's, that's basically it, right? So tell us a little bit about Soup School.
I will. I do want to say one more thing. If you need an oily chiropractor, listen. Find a chiropractor you like and tell them about oils. Because you do not make the assumption that they're not interested. That's not fair. Nobody made that assumption with me, and I fell in love with Young Living. Do not make assumptions. Assume that they're going to say yes and fall wildly in love with what you're about to tell them, and you're going to change their life forever and the lives of their grandchildren. So go find a chiropractor you love and tell them, or where even better, wear lavender oil to your appointment and watch what happens. Say, excuse me, I just need to spritz this table, and pull out your bottle of thieves and spritz the table. And they're automatically going to say, hey, what's in that bottle? Okay. Soup School, it's an online finishing school of sorts for women in practice who don't want staff or are looking to automate their staff with systems and procedures that will rock their practice. We teach our students how to organize themselves, how to master personal and professional growth, how to talk about money, how to think about money, how to ask for money, how to create your first visit systems, your second visit systems, your reevaluation systems, what paperwork you should use, what a marketing plan is. You guys, you name it. It's in school. I, I got to a point in practice where I was really sick and tired of being sick and tired, and I was working to pay my staff. That was what was happening. And finally, push came to shove, my heart got broken again and again and again. And I finally said, I'm done with this. I'm not doing this anymore. I'm going to figure out how to make every part of having a staff member automated, as automated as possible, without losing the personal connection, right? So I did that. I created the systems, and I was floating along happily. And then spring of 2020 hit, and all of a sudden, all of these practices around me and people who I really love, my colleagues, were calling me and saying, hey, Jody, what's that thing you do with the phone? Hey, Jody, what's that thing you do with texting? Hey, Jody, what's that thing you do with billing? Hey, Jody, what's that? And so on and so forth, because they knew that I knew what needed to be known, right? And I, I remember so clearly, Ashley, I remember sitting around my office. It was a cold rainy day in April of last, it was a year ago. And I said, it's time for me to step up my game. I had done a lot of coaching. I had coached thousands of doctors worldwide. I was on a staff team of maybe 20 doctors who taught an approach to chiropractic. It was the greatest honor of my profession. So I was really familiar with teaching. And I said, this is my time to step up on the platform and start teaching people what I know, the solutions that I've created. And I looked around my office, and I said, okay, who makes this possible? Who do I need to call and get involved? Because I have no business teaching people about money. I certainly have no business teaching people about brand boards, right? Or, and I have no, there are things that I'm not great at. And I called the people who are great at them, like Get Oiling and Attract Well team, and I said, hey, this is what I'm thinking about doing. Do you want to come into my school and teach? And most of them jumped and said, this is so needed. We are hearing this from everywhere. And that was the birth of Soup School. And here we are. We launched January 1st. It's wildly successful. Our students are loving what we're doing. And we went into waitlist status. We just opened up waitlist status, and now our full seats are available. And it's been fun. It's been really good creating these connections with people. Oh, can't hear you.
Yeah, there we go again. Sorry. So, so who is, who is Soup School for then? So if somebody was interested in Soup School specifically, because there is a training that we have coming up that's not specifically about Soup School. It's really more geared toward people who are just getting started. So tell us a little bit about Soup School and who it's for.
It's for women in practice looking to automate their systems. So it's for the beginning, the door-ing, and the end. For people who are new in practice, for people who have been around for a while, and for people who are looking for their exit strategy. The answer is yes. If you're looking to automate your systems in a more joy-based way, everything about it is discovering joy in practice or rediscovering joy in practice. If you're not having fun doing what you're doing, then you need to do something else. That's the bottom line because life's too darn short, right? If there's nothing else we learned over the past year, it's that boom, like that, the world can change. So are you having fun doing what you're doing? And if you're not having fun, you need to change some stuff or add. I'd use a different word right now, but I'm being a good girl because of my friends at Get Oiling. So, um, so go to stafflesspractice.com. Again, it's stafflesspractice.com. That's where you're going to learn about Soup School. As far as who I'm speaking to now, okay, I'm thinking about the coaches who just graduated school. I'm thinking about the coaches who graduated six years ago and have all of these ideas swimming around in their head, and they don't even know where to start. I'm thinking about the coaches who are, have been at it for six years, who have been seeing clients for six years, and they're just bored. They've lost their flame or their connection to their flame. Those are the people who we are looking to serve in the Soup School experience. We want to turn you into a superstar.
I love it. And so we're going to be focusing on these people that you want to be serving specifically with the training that you're going to be giving this coming week. And can we talk a little bit about that, what you're going to be covering on, let's see, that's going to be next?
Monday evening at 8:00 PM Eastern Time.
There it is.
Get into traffic at all.
Nope, nope, nope.
So, I'm, I'm thinking about my ride home from South Carolina. I'm talking to that, Jody, in that webinar. I'm talking to the fear that you might be feeling if you're new in practice. I'm talking to the creative part of you who knows there's something really good that is waiting. It's like right there that just needs to come to fruition. And I'm talking to you about the systems that are needed to really have a strong practice that you can lean on. You know, someone once said to me, you're only as strong as your weakest link, right? So for me, my weakest link is always staying consistent with my systems. If I, I create the best systems ever. If I stay consistent with them, I win every time. The trick for me is figuring out, you know, we're all, we're all square pegs. All of us are square pegs. There's no such thing as a round peg, right? There are a lot of round holes, but we're all square pegs. So the key is to create the holes for your peg so that it fits, right? It might take some carving here and carving here and carving up top and down below. And that carving might look like, how are you spending your time? How are you talking about abundance? And if you're integrating oils into your practice, are you clean with your words? Are you clean with what you're allowed to do and not allowed to do? Very, very important. Are you, are you excited? And do you believe in your service? Are you excited about your service? Would you pay what you're charging for your service? So these are the questions that we're going to have answered on Monday evening. And the other thing I wanted to say is that I write a lot of love letters. And every Tuesday morning, I send a love letter out to anybody that wants one. If you go to my website, stafflesspractice.com, you can get on my love letters list. That's where I drip you like, hey, remember how beautiful you are, and that you're the only square peg that's shaped like you, right? The, the world is designed with round holes. That doesn't mean that your squareness is wrong or off. It just means that you need to find just the right tool to cut the pieces that need to be cut. That's what my love letters are all about. Okay.
No, that's, no, it's wonderful. You guys, we're going to talk about that. And more specifically, we're going to talk about three common mistakes when you're new in practice and how you can avoid them. If you're here live, click the link in the chat. You're not only going to get access to this webinar that Jody is going to be hosting on Monday evening, you will also get access to the to-do-ta-da from Soup School. So tell us about the to-do-ta-da, create a checklist.
Okay, this is what this sounds like, to-do-ta-da. So it looks like the, the greatest checklist in the world, once again on steroids. It looks like, how do you get your brain to be quiet on a regular basis? If you're waking up at 3 o'clock in the morning with new creative ideas, how do you get those ideas out and turn them into an agenda item for you to do on Sunday morning at 10:00 AM? Or whatever it might be. That's the to-do-ta-da, and we give you that when you register for this. Isn't that fun? So we're not only giving you a webinar, we're also giving you the greatest tool ever.
Yes, guys, and I've seen this. We were, we were really blessed to be able to contribute to Soup School. So I've seen all of this training and created some training to go with it and teach implementation and all of that. So I can vouch for this, you guys. It's awesome. So make sure that you, that you register here. Link is in the chat. We'll put it in the replay as well, and send it out to you guys via email. We are going to be live Monday night, 8:00 PM Eastern, and we are going to get into these three most common mistakes that new practice owners make. that new practice owners make and how you can be a success story and not a statistic. So is there anything else that you would want to kind of share, maybe, uh, you know, tease in here about what you plan to be talking about on Monday? So that folks who are, I don't know, deciding whether or not they're going to be, I don't know, binging on Netflix can choose to come over here and learn. Learn what you're sharing.
Can we go back to the view where I can see everybody in the chat room?
Yeah, absolutely.
So I would say that, you know, I was talking to a new student this morning and she was really overwhelmed because it's overwhelming right now. Everything's overwhelming right now, right? My biggest piece of advice to you is to be where you're at. Look at where your feet are right now. And that's all you need to figure out. Where are your feet at right now? And what do you need to do in this moment to make the best of this moment? Don't worry about six months from now. Don't worry about six months ago. What do you need in this moment right now? And that's what we're going to be talking about on Monday night. So you know what? If that's not relevant to you at this point in your life, Godspeed to you. I want to learn a webinar from you. If it is relevant to you, then make sure you click the link in the, in the little chat box there.
There it is. There it is. So um, so definitely do, if you, if you know you're not going to be available at that time, register anyway. You're going to be sent the replay. And guys, you want the checklist, you're going to get Jody's checklist right away.
The other thing, Ash, I'm sorry to interrupt. So I'm just looking at the comments. So two questions I'm going to answer. One is soup school just for women? Nope. We've got some men in school. As long as you don't mind being referred to a sister and mama here and there, you're in. Um, the other question that we get a lot about soup school is like, what's the, what's the guarantee? What's the promise? And the promise is, you know, our goal is to far, far, far exceed your expectations. And if you don't love what we're doing, we pay you back. It's a hundred percent money-back guarantee. You get to keep it forever and ever and ever. Um, but as far as Monday is concerned, Monday is a really great um, way to explore how I teach, um, what I do, what I don't do, um, especially with the to-do-ta-da. That's like the first place you should start. And guess what, guys? All of this lives in Attract Well. So you're going to not only see what we do at soup school, you're also going to see Attract Well at work. You're going to see what landing, if you go to the link, that's a landing page in Attract Well. And then you're going to get an automated email. That's an automated email from Attract Well. You're watching us walk our walk, right? Boom.
Yes, absolutely. And, and just again, for those of you, maybe if you tune in a little late, you're like, what is Attract Well? I thought it was with Get Oil-ing. It's the same, same, same thing, right? So everything that you would be learning from Jody, uh, everything that you see her doing, actually, that link that you click, the whole experience there, that's stuff that is built on the system. It's something you're capable of doing, of using, of following her example and uh, and, and getting that done. So scroll up, uh, and I'm going to, I'm going to pop this in here. Actually, no, I don't have it saved. Uh, we have the link for you to join in the chat, you guys. Uh, so just scroll up just a little bit. Uh, it's not just a link to register for the webinar. You're also going to get to-do-ta-da. Um, and to-do-ta-da is, uh, is, is Jody's whole system around getting everything done, right? So if you feel overwhelmed, uh, if, if you feel like you're chasing your tail, um, the queen of checklists is here to give you her magic tools. So make sure that you grab that.
You're right where you're supposed to be.
Yeah.
We're all overwhelmed right now, guys. And if you want to get out of overwhelm, do what your grandparents used to do. I was just talking to a pregnant practice member. She's got all kinds of digestive issues and she's like, I'm on this and I'm on that and I'm doing this diet and that diet. And I'm like, go call your grandma and ask her what she used to eat when she was pregnant. Do what your grandparents used to do to get out of overwhelm. They probably did something with the land, with the earth, right? They certainly, they certainly had calm, quiet time at the end of the day without any screens on. So do what your grandparents used to do. That's my doctor advice.
Yes, I love that so much. Timeless wisdom. What did grandma do?
What did grandma do?
WWGD. I love it. I love it. I just put the link in here in the chat again, you guys, please. Olive oil for earrings. Yes. Love that old school. It was, everything was whiskey with my great grandmother. In the ear, gargle it.
On the guns.
Uh huh, uh huh. I wasn't sure if it was just a southern thing and it was like a deep south, southern thing. Um, cool. You guys, who is registered? Who is registered? Is this class enrollment online form? Yes, yes. Uh, Sandy, what you're seeing that Jody has shared here, the form that you're filling out is something that is made on the same stuff, same software.
Everything that you guys are going to see from us is an Get Oil-ing slash Attract Well product.
Mm-hmm. And if, and if you decided to work with Jody in soup school, soup school is built in a vault. Just like you guys have access to in your Get Oil-ing accounts. So yeah. Uh, and literally you guys, like J- Jody uses our system that you guys use to send out, you know, your member education and to speak with your prospects and all of this stuff. She uses the same stuff to run like a significant percentage of her chiropractic business. And that's kind of what soup school is all about is, is showing people how she was able to eliminate all of that overhead, you guys, uh, and, and to create a streamlined, simple and easy to run, one-person practice. And that's for chiropractor, right? That is a far more complicated business model than most, right? Uh, especially if we, we think about the flexibility you have as a coach or if you want to create courses or whatever, which is something Jody has obviously done as well. You technically run three things.
Yeah, and it was kind of like, you know, I felt like I had this huge thing to create. And I remember um, I was studying a course that the teacher taught with, with you guys. So when I reached out to you, I hadn't even thought yet, oh, my, my whole school could live in Attract Well or Get Oil-ing. And when that came to light, it was like all of the worlds came together because you guys do all of the things that I, I had this and I had this and I had this and I had this. And finally, it was like one thing that did it all. And I, like, I heard the angels sing. It was, it was a great moment.
I love it. I love it. So Angela, uh, no, no need to be accused. If you have Get Oil-ing, you don't need anything else. If you're here today, you're a part of our Get Oil-ing community, you are oily. Get Oil-ing is the software that was built for that purpose. We have what Jody has brought up a couple of times. We have a software platform that does a lot of what Get Oil-ing does, but for non-oilers, right? So if you're an oiler, you already have everything that you need. You don't need to get another thing. Just know that there are other people in the world who are not oily, who are getting a similar set of benefits, although nowhere near as, as, as fully fleshed out for the young living business like you guys have.
If I wanted to use all of the tools that Get Oil-ing offers, but I wanted to sell used cars for my business, I could do that with Attract Well. It's the same concepts, but they, the, the Attract Well version doesn't have all of the brilliant pieces of marketing materials and information and it's the blank slate version. So you only need Get Oil-ing if you're an oiler.
Yes, exactly. And you can run multiple businesses from your Get Oil-ing account because you can have those different vaults, the different automation. You use your Get Oil-ing, not an Attract Well. Like I use your Get Oil-ing for your chiropractic practice.
Yes, I do. And my oiling practice.
Yep.
Essentially, my chiropractic practice, that's all through Get Oil-ing, all of it.
Love it, love it, love it. Yeah. So um, so you don't have to have two different platforms. Of course, if you have another network marketing company, that's a different consideration that you might want to make just for the sake of compliance and not getting into any kind of issues with Young Living. But, um, but yeah, you don't need to get the other thing if you have Get Oil-ing in the majority of cases. Anyway, so I would love to give you the floor here, Jody. We do have Katara is here and she signed up for a, a website review. So I want to make sure we honor that time and give her that. And of course, if anybody came here looking for live help today on anything. So I want to be able to, you know, make sure you guys have that time. But Jody, uh, what else would you like to share or have us know, just to make sure that everybody knows to come and join this party on Monday? And get your to-do-ta-da.
I'm grateful to be playing in your playground. I'm grateful that I'm the one on the other side of this microphone. I think it's huge. I, I recognize what a huge opportunity is for me in my little corner in New Jersey. And I can't wait to share what I know with you guys. I, I think it's good stuff and I would pay a million bucks for it when I was new in practice if I had a million bucks at that time, but I had like 20. And I'll see you guys on Monday.
Awesome. Thank you so much for being here, Jody. You guys, send her some love. Make sure you are going over to this link in the comments to sign up and get her to-do list. That's going to be something that's helpful for you no matter what you do. And then of course, if you are new in practice or you want to, you, you want to refresh, you want to make sure that you're getting off on the right foot, make sure that you're signing up on that link so that you can join us on Monday night or get the replay. Uh, so you can get Jody's insights into getting your practice started, right? So thank you again, Jody, so, so very much for being here and looking forward to having you back again.
I'll see you guys soon.
Okay. All right, Katara, you are here and I have your website pulled up. I have to make you a panelist for you to be able to speak though. So let's see if this brings you out. There we go. I'm going to open up your website here and share when you get your um, microphone turned on or, you know, depending on if you're able to do that. Would definitely love to chat with you back and forth and talk about uh, your site. I don't know that I have audio turned on for you though. Can you, can you say something for me? I see you. We can take a moment to figure that out. Definitely um, speak up once you're able to, to speak. Uh, and then of course, in the meantime, if, if you'd like to, you can actually directly message me in our thread and we can communicate that way as well, if that's, if that's our option here, uh, as, as we look at, at your site. And for those of you who are here, who came looking for support or help today, if you need hands-on with your site, with things that you're working on, we can use this time together. Uh, so definitely put any questions that you have in the Q and A and we can walk through that. All right, let me see if I can send you a message. All right. So um, Katara, I sent you a direct message here in the Zoom chat. If that's helpful to you, you can maybe just tell me what kind of feedback you're looking for on your site specifically. Um, or if there's anything in particular you would like to, you know, have me walk you through, show you how to do.
Okay, I had to um,
Hi, there you are.
Yeah, I had to join from my phone. I, I don't know what happened. So.
Well, I'm glad we're able to figure it out. Excited to have you.
Yeah, I just got on my phone instead.
Cool. Okay, awesome. All right. So I'm going to open up this, the link that I got from EU. It looks like this is um, a lead magnet, right?
Yeah. I, you know, I haven't um, spent as much time as I really need to, like, learning the platform. I just um, I just finished my certification for AFT. And so I, I really wanted to try to like focus on that. And so now that I'm done with that, I want to really now be able to come in and implement that um, you know, into Get Oil-ing. What I did try to start doing was creating a custom page. And that's what like, I've had a hard time, um, I think it's probably my custom page there, um, had a hard time linking like some of the blog posts that I've already done into like um, you know, like into like my mermaid hair, because I have a blog for that, but taking that blog and linking it in there, it, it, I could never get it to work. It just did not work for me. And you know, trying to follow the steps. Yeah. So um, so yeah. It's, this is all like very new, very new.
Okay, this is, well, well, this is great. This is a great start and I'm excited to see it. Just, just so you know, real quick though, if you hit this little button right here, you can choose to have the system import your blog post for you. If you want to just have your most recent ones show up and you don't have to worry about, uh, about linking them back, it'll do that automatically. And so you would be choosing like this one right here. It'll automatically populate whatever your featured image is on your blog post and the title of it. And then people can click and go off to it. So that's, that is an option. Now, some, some folks do want to have uh, sort of a specific couple of blog posts, not just any recent ones. But say you wanted to start with mermaid hair or ditch and switch. Let's go ahead and uh, and, and find those real quick in your blog post. So uh, let's come over to manage and find them. Oh, there we go. There it is. So um, over here on View Post, you can either click it and then copy the text that's up here or from this managed post page. If you're on a track pad, use two fingers or right-click if you're on a mouse. This View Post, so you see this open link uh, or copy link. So I'm going to copy this link. And then let's go back over here to your custom page. And then when you look at this, sir, um, we clicked the image and there's a menu that pops up on the image, right?
Yeah.
Insert link is, is what's showing up here. So we're going to click that and paste what we just copied from your blog post. And I like to have it open in a new tab so that they don't lose your homepage. I don't always want to open in a new tab, but this is an instance where I do it. And then we save it. And now it's good to go. Um, let's go ahead and do that for both of them.
So I don't know what I was doing then to where, uh, because I did get like Megan Larson's course on how to customize. And so like, yeah, I, I've spent a long time trying to, to, to link them. And every time I linked it, it just, it wasn't functioning for me.
Well, so you could always, you could always test. So I just saved it. Now we're going to hit View. And let's down here and there we go. Wow, that's going to go up to your. Awesome, awesome. So um, another thing, and let's, let's go ahead since we're, we're talking about links here. Let's pretty this up on your blog real quick. So instead of having this crazy long Amazon blog uh, link here, I'm going to copy this. And I'm going to get rid of it. Uh, and we're going to say, here is the link instead of down below. Here is the link for the glass bottles I use. Uh, and so I'm going to select the text that I want to highlight and hyperlink because we want to make that.
Well, actually, that, I have to remove that actually because yes, I have no idea what happened with my Amazon uh, affiliates account. But, but they removed me and they're pretty stubborn in terms of once they removed you, trying to help you figure out why they removed you. And so I actually need to probably just take that off because I'm sending someone to a link that, you know, I'm not an affiliate with anymore. So.
Got you. Okay, okay. Yeah. So um, anything you would want to swap it out with in the meantime or?
Um, I, I maybe just ending it with, you know, how, that I can help them. Um, you know, I specifically added that link so they could um, you know, get the glass bottles off my affiliate link, but that's just not more.
Okay. Well, you may, you may want to look into other, you know, maybe other companies that you could affiliate with. But also, you know, there's, there's no harm in um, in simply sharing something that works for you to build trust, right? So uh, all right. So we want to, want to just go ahead and get rid of this for now?
Yes.
Okay. Cool, cool. So um, so now you know how to link things and we've got that done. Um, are you wanting this to be the homepage or are you still working on it?
Um, I mean, I feel, I, I do want it to be my homepage. Um, there's just, I mean, for now, that's pretty much all I have, you know, what I will be, what, what my intention is, you know, over the next um, week is I'm kind of like restarting HBR to kind of just, you know, I'm starting fresh now with some more things to add to it. Um, and so um, I want to do the same with, you know, with my Get Oil-ing. My thing is I, I haven't used it to, I really liked listening to um, Dr. Jody, because I haven't used it to its highest potential to help me even with this. You know, I do have a small member group with Young Living, um, and I haven't even done that. Um, and so so, you know, so I want that to be my custom homepage, yes, because like I'm not just oils. That's like a very small part of me. And so it's, it's as complete as it's going to get right now. So I don't know if it's like not good enough, but I just don't know if it's, if, if it should be because it's, it is what it is.
I think it's great. I think it's great. I think it's great and it's, it's perfectly good for right now. And so we're going to set it up as your homepage if you're cool with it. Do you want to do that? Okay, so I'm under my site settings and I'm going to go to site menu right here. All right, so right now we have website homepage and I'm not sure. Let's look at that. Yeah, this, um, three ways being crunchy can change your life is a, that is something from Go For Gold, I think. Let's go look real quick and make sure that we've got the right page name. So I'm pretty sure it is the, the my custom page, right? That's the one that.
Yes, yeah, that's just what I named it when, you know, just to, for me to quickly remember.
Okay, so I've got that published so that we can use it. So our home, we're going to remove this one. And we're going to add a new item and this is going to be a website page. This is home and we're going to go grab, where is it?
Is it my custom page?
You know what? It may be that I, it wasn't, it wasn't published when I opened this page initially. So let me, let me try that again. So website page, right? Greg, please correct me if I'm doing this wrong. I don't do this much. There we go, my custom page. All right, and this, then we're going to check right here. So guys, what I did, menu item type is website page, menu item label is home, the page. Make sure it's the one that we're looking for and then show under menu header, home in this case. And then finally, importantly, make this the homepage, the main page for my website. So when we click that and we go done and we save. Now, when we go up here to view my site, we see your homepage. Which absolutely links off to your blog.
Yeah. And so you, you were saying that as I write blogs, I can, I'm looking at my computer too and listening. So I don't know how it looks, but I can, as I write a blog, there's the, the, I can't think of the word, but the first picture you showed me with the three blogs, I can use that template and it just automatically links them opposed to me going into grabbing the link and pasting it into the little.
That's right, that's right. So here's, here's what you want to do. If you want to use our, our section template that automatically populates your blog posts, what you're going to want to do, you, you want to have enough blog posts for the number that it's going to be showing, right? So you have two blog posts, so I'm going to show you the two blog post option. But if you want to use the three one, if you like that better, then make sure you've got three blog posts. But what I want to make sure you do first before we do this is let's go to manage your blog posts. You want to make sure that you have a featured image, which you have here. But is this the image that you want to show up on your homepage when we're talking about mermaid hair? Or do you want it to be that one that you have over here? Do you want this to be the featured image for the blog post?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to swap this out and we're going to, oh, um, no, I don't want to do that. Wait a minute, I don't think that's what I was planning to do. We're going to choose a file. There we go. And no, it's not, is Greg, is there a way to choose from the photos on the site to do this? Or should I be?
For the featured image? Yeah, doesn't have that image picker. I think that's a wish list item.
Okay, guys, I'm just.
From Canva.
Got you, so I just saved it to my downloads. So there it is. And that here, okay. I'm going to remove that. And now I'm going to upload this one that I just downloaded from your homepage. Save, okay. And I am going to go back and do that. I'm going to grab this ditch and switch one as well. Save the image to downloads. And then I'm going to swap out the image on this guy and then it'll be good to go. Just make sure that as you are continuing to blog, that you use the same Canva template that you used for these two, oops. Um, these two, make sure that you have those, like the next blog post you make. If you make a post about, I don't know, cleaning or something like that, have it be the circle with like, follow the same kind of branding that you're doing here so that it stays consistent.
Right.
Right, all right, so those are done. Now let's go over to your page. All right, so that's under custom pages and that is my custom page. And this, this is so simple. All we have to do is under my blog, I'm going to click here, scroll down, recent blog posts to column and just click that. All right, so I'm going to put here, check out my latest blog post below. And then I'm just going to hit save. Now let's go view and you're going to have, this is going to be kind of duplicated, but you'll see what this looks like on your site. Oh, I guess I, did I not do that right? Well, the first one worked. I, I need to figure out what I did wrong for the second one, but it's going to automatically load. So you see mermaid hair is here. Posts, right? So another thing that you can do with, Greg, can we center these? Is that a thing? Does that affect?
Yeah, absolutely. That's, that's why they're tagged, so you can actually move them around, format the style, change the font, all that sort of thing. Center.
All right, I'm going to center your titles and I'm going to center, I'm just, I'm just basically going to center everything in their two columns. And I think this one is already, okay, cool. So I'm going to save that and then let's go back and investigate why the image didn't take on our blog post here. That's probably because I left it too quickly or something, or maybe I didn't even do it. That's me. All right.
You know what you meant to do.
I know what I meant to do. I, I, I hope you guys watching this who like get frustrated with trying to learn the tech stuff, like, see, I, I, I do stuff like this all the time. And I do this stuff a lot. All right, so let's, so now let's refresh. All right, here we go. So now your recent blog posts, they show up here, they're already linked, right? And there's buttons here too. Now, if you decided that maybe you didn't want to have those certain tags there and you just wanted it to be, maybe you don't want the buttons or whatever. Greg, we can like, if you didn't want the buttons below the blog posts, it wouldn't hurt anything to remove those, right?
Correct, yep. And if you want to make your own buttons, there's actually a different tag that you can put in there. I don't remember what it is offhand, but you can just put the link in there and then you can make your own button or link or graphic or whatever you want to on that.
Yep, so that's going to be right down here.
That's so much easier.
Yeah, yeah. Do you want to, you want to go ahead and toss this right here? You want to get rid of it?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, all right, we made that simple. Do you want to keep the butts underneath like you see here? Or do you just want to keep the images there?
No, so if they click the image, then it'll go to what I wrote?
Yep, I believe they could also, they could also click the title. So I mean, they've got three different things they can click here. So you actually don't have to have all of it.
Oh, yeah, I, I think I could take off the buttons. I think just aesthetic, I, I like it to look better without it.
I do too, I do too. So, so all you got to do is just delete that tag there. Delete, save and now they're gone.
Wow.
And you could also, this could be deleted too because you have blog up here, right? Actually, you know what? Here, let's, let's play around with this. Is this text or, okay, that's an image. So if you want to get this font loaded into your Get Oiling system, what you can do is you could just replace what's right here with my blog, but just, you know, use this font. So we do have just, if you go to our, this little guy here and you look for custom fonts, it'll actually walk you through how you can upload the fonts that you want to use.
Yeah, okay.
And there's actually. Pick from. There's actually like a thousand Google fonts that you can pick from already if you have a certain plan levels. So, yeah, they don't show up here, but you can turn them on. That help article shows you where to find them.
Cool. I love it, I love it. So that's, yeah, there we go. Oh, you know what? One more thing, you see how this says my custom page up here? Let's change that. So this is the name as it shows up in the back when you're logged in and you see the list. But this is title bar text. This is what shows up right here, you see? We don't want your people to see that part. We want them to see, you know, welcome or, you know, welcome to what, right? Like, what's, um, what would you want somebody to hear from you? Like, what would be the words you would say? Like, if somebody has just landed on your website, what do you want to say to them?
Um, welcome's a good start.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, great. There you go then. And then, you know, just as you, as you continue learning and adding and things like that, if you ever wanted to share your page on, on social media, for instance, then you could create an image like this in Canva or an image, a custom share image in Canva. This is going to be, we actually had information about this. I think if we go over to, what is it? Is that customize my site where we give the dimensions for that? No, do you know what the dimensions are for this?
I mean, it kind of depends on the social network, but of course Facebook's the king. They change that size every once in a while. I'd have to look it up, but it's like 1200 by something, I think.
Okay, I wanted to see, here we go, Facebook share image. I have, I have this in Canva. Let me see real quick if, okay, 1200 by 630 is what.
That's what I'm seeing here too, 1200 by 630 when I look it up.
Yep, so 1200 by 630 is what you would want to have to create the custom share image. And that's going to be the thing that shows up if, if you were to take this, this page and put it in like a Facebook post and it would populate that, that image.
And then they would just click the image and it takes them to my page?
Well, no, you know how when you put, like, if you're going to make a post on Facebook and you put a link in it and then it automatically populates information? That's what, that's what would show up, right? So if you were to share the Get Oiling website on, on Facebook, then there is an image with some words and stuff that, that's automatically going to populate. Or, you know, if you go to Google or whatever, like, it's, it's just, it's a little bit more advanced. It's not something that you have to have, but it would be an interesting thing if you planned on sharing in this on social media, you'd be able to customize that. Cause you, you can have that on your customize my site and you have one right here. So this will show up, but you can also customize it per page as well.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, that makes, sometimes, you know, like you, you were saying you, you offer Young Living, but there's other things you offer as well. Maybe the one doesn't work for other things. If you want to have a page that talks about AFT, maybe it's not the same one that you want to use with the sharing image that, you know, where you're talking about oils or ditch and switch, right? Right, there's a lot of opportunity there. And they're really easy to make in Canva if you've got the right, the right dimensions. But yeah, good job, good job. I love it. This is, um, I love that you are working with Megan. We love Megan and you're doing a great job with this.
Thank you. It's a lot of trial and error, but it's, it feels good when you get it, you know?
Yes, yes, yes. I mean, it's to get good at things worth getting good at. And, you know, we didn't get into what we do to get good at this thing, right? I don't think anybody here today, you know, came down this path thinking I'm going to master making websites. Like that's, this is not the, the, the path that we carved for ourselves. But the thing is, if we can just learn enough of the things that matter, we can just grow in leaps and bounds and facilitate all kinds of, of big growth shifts for ourselves. So congratulations on the hard work that you've done.
Thank you.
Yes, proud of your work.
I, I enjoyed today very much.
Good, good, I'm, I'm really glad and we look forward to having you back on another one. You've also got some, you've got some, some love in the comments here, best wishes with your developing site. Oh, Holly's got a little, a little spelling nerd info here for you in the chat if you want to check that out.
Oh, thank you. I will definitely.
Awesome, awesome.
To everything, everything.
Wonderful, wonderful. We'll make sure you're in our Facebook group and, and of course you guys come, let Katara know how great she has done with her site in our group. All right, so, yes, thank you again for being here and for your hard work. All right, so let's see, I want to. Okay, so now there's just a couple of questions here, guys. If they, if you have anything that you put into the Q and A, just to make sure we don't miss your questions because I haven't been able to scroll through the, the chat all this time. Make sure they're in the Q and A before we get going. And let me, I'm going to come back over to Brady Bunch here since, hi guys. All right, so Kay says, I'm trying hard to set up everything. Oh my God, you have a puppy. I'm sorry, Kay, there's a puppy here. All right, Kay says, I'm trying hard to set up everything in my member area. I went through the videos and set up the vault, the member area. I'm kind of confused. I use for workspace and wanted to put classes in the vault and use online classes, but can't figure out how to do it. So if you are, and I, Kay, maybe let me know in the chat, did you use the how to move your groups off of Facebook to set it up? Because I did go through a couple of ways that I use Grow Workspace with my clients or really how my clients are using their Grower Space with our Get Oiling accounts to, to set up for sharing and for facilitating with members. The short answer is, you know, the, the ways that we use it, primarily what I teach in the how to move your groups off of Facebook course, which by the way, you guys is free, please go there and like, and get it. GetOiling.com forward slash move your groups. Way through everything you need to know, lead group, member group, builder group, and leveraging content partners, amazing content to go into these, these vaults to save you time. But the main ways you're going to use like a member vault, for instance, are going to be for taking the time off of your hands for educating your people, right? So this is like, hey, you're brand new, you just got started. There's a lot to learn, but I'm not the only source for you. Here's the thing, it has lots in it and you can come look at it whenever you want to. And, and it's not a giant book, you can interact with it and we're here and we're friends and we go live and stuff, right? So like, that's, that's the main way you're going to want to use it to give an orientation to your new members and to provide a hub for ongoing support off of Facebook. The other thing you can do, and this is something your team can do as well, because you know, Get Oiling comes with Zoom, is when you get on a call with someone who is a prospect, you get on a Zoom with them or you sit down with them in person, you know, you have a conversation with them as we do before we actually start sharing Young Living, right? We find out what they're interested in. And then you say, oh, I have a resource for that. And you go and you log into your member area and you say, I actually have this thing that's available. And if you were to get started working with me, you would have all of this too. Here, let me find the one that you need. And then you, you screen share, you go through and you make a presentation there. So you could actually build it to, you know, the value proposition and the sale if you wanted to. So in terms of giving online classes though, and if, you know, online classes are something that you're planning to do as a means to bring people in, right? You know, to, to get leads interested or moving toward getting started, that's something you're probably not going to want to use the member area for. Unless again, like you are, you know, one-on-one with somebody and you're walking them through. What I would do is use our RSVP system, your Zoom or a landing page and Zoom and give live classes, take registration using our RSVP. And actually there's, let me show you real quick. I feel like I'm, I'm calling her out for being awesome all the time and, and she's typically really happy for me to show that she's being awesome. So, so here's Colette and she gives a lot of classes and they are open to anyone. Now she has live events here and when you have your GetOilingWebsite.com forward slash events, this is what it looks like. And so people can sign themselves up here, they can join the Zoom. There's, she's got lots of pages of events. She's got tons and tons of events that are coming up. So what, so what I would do if you're hosting live classes that people who are not members could join, put those in a public facing place so people can RSVP, you get them onto your list so that you're able to effectively follow up with them. And then of course, as Colette does, when you go live with your class, you record it on Zoom and then you can actually put that inside of your member area and you let the people know who aren't your members. Hey, by the way, if you want access to the recording, if you're one of our members, you'll get it, right? Put it in your member vault. I hope that helps. Um, okay, Velma says, I loaded my landing page on gardening, but it does not show up when I look at my site. How do I make sure it's active? And what is the general email for getting help on Get Oiling? So support@getoiling.com Velma is where you would. Uh, and what is the general email for getting help on Get Oiling? So support@getoiling.com Velma is where you would send. General support questions. Um, the gardening one, so there are two, if you got them from Grow Workspace. Uh, one of them is going to be under landing pages. So let me show you real quick. Um, then it's going to be under landing pages and that's going to be right here under contacts, landing pages. And you'll see it here, right? Um, if you don't see it, you do want to go back to your resource bundle, make sure that you've downloaded it. Or, or go back and click on the resource bundle link and, and Grow Workspace to import it. Now, there is another one, like I mentioned, there are two different versions of that that are offered in that particular grow bundle. The other one is going to be under custom pages and I would just go here and if you have a lot of them, just search for garden and that'll, that should bring it up for you. And if you don't see it, it probably didn't import. So just make sure you go back to grow and grab that link. Okay, Christie, last question or last one and yes, last one. All right, Christie says, can we put the pre-designed sway inside a custom page that fills the page? And doesn't just pop up in the small box with the little arrows in the top right corner, which opens into a separate sway link if you click it. Followed your directions for adding a sway, but it looks silly. You have to open it to view it in the actual sway link. Hope that makes sense. So um, Greg, do you know if there's a way to embed a sway to make it larger than if you were using the existing embed code? That sway provides?
There should be, like if you're using the embed code and not that little, uh, I think there's, what is it? The embed URL link. If you're not using that and you're using the, the embed code where you've got to copy and paste something from sway. If you look at it, there'll be some numbers in there. There, it'll be like width equals something, height equals something. Change those numbers, make them bigger. And that will make it bigger. Um, the catch is it may be difficult to make it work on all the devices. Um, because every screen is sized as different. So you might have to test it on your phone just to make sure that it's not too wide and you're only seeing like half of it. So uh, you can also experiment with uh, instead of a number, well, it's a number, but just try a percentage. Sometimes you can get like a hundred percent to work depending on what you're doing there. Um, but yeah, so. Right, go to the code view. So you'll see like, okay, so in the middle of that, there's this frame. It's got a width and height in there. If you set that to set the width to a hundred percent, try, I don't know if we can edit this or all, or we can see if it works, I guess.
Yeah, let me, I'm going to copy it real quick before we, before we start fooling around with this. Okay, so a hundred percent?
Yeah, just a hundred percent. Leave the height alone because percentage heights don't work super well. Uh, and yeah, toggle that out and see. That made it a little wider, looks like.
It did, yeah. So here's what, here's what it looks like. This is how wide it was.
Okay. And if you want to like totally full web, then you can go into the page editor and make that section, I think, full with, with the section settings.
Wow, I was today years old when I learned this. This is amazing. Okay, so uh, that's going to be right here, setting to do, um, full.
There you go.
Whoa, you guys, we gotta let Grow Workspace notice.
Ah, that's much better. And there.
Oh, oh, wow, 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 wow. Thank you, Christie. What? Look at this. Oh my goodness, I have to go back and change code on everything. Wow, oh my God, I had no idea. You guys. How cool is that? How cool is that? Thank you for that question, Christie. And, and, and Greg, thank you. That's, oh my goodness, you're excited too, Christie. Yeah, I'm totally nerding out over this. I, I changed code and it didn't break. Um, so that usually helped me and Toad work together. All right, Paula says, how can I make a landing page continue to show after someone registers? So if you're using a landing page, like in contact settings, landing pages. Then you're going to use what's called kiosk mode. Oops, that's going to be, come on, Ashley, let's do this. All right, landing page is right here. So kiosk mode is going to bring it back. So kiosks is like what you would use at a trade show or, you know, a vendor event, right? Where you are at a table and you have a giveaway or whatever and uh, and they need to put in their name and email to get the thing. And then as soon as, you know, they put it in, somebody else needs to use the iPad or whatever to put their information in. It's going to be in kiosk mode. If you want uh, a custom page with a lead form to work in kiosk mode. All you want to do is uh, whatever the page is, let's just say this is the landing page, gardening oils journal giveaway. Grab this link right here. And then in settings, after, in the lead capture, after they have put their information in, you have it redirect back to the page. So we would paste this here. So it would just refresh the page after they've opted in. All right. I don't want to save that note. Although I do want to kind of go back and put that hundred in there. We need to let them know that before they start building all those pages. Um, all right. So thank you for that question, Paula. Uh, Mary is asking, how do you check to see if it still looks okay on your phone? If you increase the size of the sway thing you just did. So what you saw actually. Um, and I'm, I'm on a desktop computer right now. Uh, you could also do this on a laptop. Um, I don't think this would work on a tap, but on a desktop, all you have to do. Squeeze the page sideways just as far as it can go. And you're looking at like a mobile view. If you squeeze out and again, I, I don't know how far, at some point in here, it's tablet view. Uh, but, but like this, this would be mobile. This is where you're checking it for mobile. Just shrink it as far down as it'll go. On a Mac, for me, it stops. I don't know if it does that on other devices, but um, but this looks great, so um.
Of course, always try it on your phone too, if you can ultimately.
Yeah.
Sometimes little things show up on your phone that don't show up here too, but this is like a great 99% preview.
Yeah, yeah, that is, that is pretty, pretty, pretty cool. I'm kind of stoked about that. All right. Cool. Thank you guys for all of these great questions. Uh, big thanks again to Jody for being here today. You guys, please make sure, uh, if you haven't already, uh, that you are signed up to get her training on Monday. And to get her download that she's giving away. And I will be, uh, as soon as this is done processing, we should an email out to you guys. With a link for that. Uh, so yeah, um, great call today. I'm kind of blown away at what I just learned.
There's more fun tricks like that, I'm sure.
I know, right? So many more and, and we're still discovering them. Uh, Paula says, my kiosk mode isn't working. So Amanda, you're on it. Thanks. Let's get in touch and check it out. All right. So you guys, thank you for being here. We love you and we look forward to seeing you next week, team. Always good.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.